All right, I'm gonna convene the Temecula City Council meeting for July 23rd, 2024. May I have a roll call, please? No, not yet. Call to order invocation, we're gonna have our city manager do our invocation and then I'll do the flag salute. So could you please stand?
Would you please bow your head with me? Dear me Father Lord, we give you thanks for this day. We thank you for the privilege of living in the great city of Temecula and working for the city of Temecula. And Lord, I just wanna ask your protection over all our police and fire personnel and their day-to-day activities, protecting our residents, protecting our businesses. I also wanna just ask and just give gratitude for the employees dedicated to the quality of life in this city. Lord, you just continue to give them wisdom and discernment. And I pray for the city council, Lord, that they too will be wise in their decision-making in this business meeting this evening. And we give you all glory and honor in Jesus' name. Amen.
All right, would you please all join me in the salute to our flag? Ready, begin. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. All right, now can I have a roll call, please?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. Councilmember Alexander?
Here.
Mayor Potem Kelfis?
Here.
Councilmember Schwank?
Here.
Mayor Stu?
Here. All right, so we're gonna start off with a couple of presentations of retiring employees. So the first one is our Principal Management Analyst Julie Tarrant. Would you please come forward?
Yay! And while the mayor is coming down there to meet you, I'll go ahead and read this certificate of recognition upon your retirement. The city of Temecula congratulates Julie Tarrant for her retirement after 24 years of dedicated service in the Public Works Department. Julie started working for the city in 2000 and is retiring as Principal Management Analyst in the Public Works Department. It is not too much to say that Julie has been instrumental in managing finances for the department and has been responsible for the preparation of annual operation budgets for all Public Works divisions and programs. Julie managed numerous grant applications that provided millions of dollars in funding for many capital improvement projects in the city of Temecula. She has been a key member of the management team in Public Works and leaves a great legacy of professionalism and dedication to the city of Temecula. She will truly be missed in Public Works. The city of Temecula congratulates you Julie on your retirement and wishes you continued success in all your future endeavors.
Thank you.
So there's a... testing, yeah. So there is a little correction to be made. She actually has 27 years of service, 24 as a full-time benefited employee, but she did three years as a project employee. So we wanna give her full credit for all 27 years.
Thank you.
And I've got to work with you for eight. So you have been instrumental with our Pat Thomas, who has brought a lot of projects forward that have brought a lot of funding opportunities, and you were able to make those miracles happen. So thank you for what you've done, and I'll turn it over to my city council. We'll start with Zach.
Thank you, Mayor Stu. Julie, I just wanted to say thank you for, obviously for your years of service, but coming on a few years ago as a new council member, I had to spend a few subcommittees with you. And I always appreciated your professionalism and your guidance really as we worked through some fairly complex items related to Public Works and whatnot. So it was, you made it easy. You made it easy on us and you were always prepared. And then my Friday walkarounds, I always appreciated just connecting with you as a person and as a fellow Temeculan. So thank you and good luck on everything you do.
Thank you.
All right, councilmember Alexander.
Julie, I just wanna say thank you very much, just as everybody would agree that you've been very instrumental here in the city. So thank you for your hard work, your dedication, and what are you doing after, now that you're retired?
She's traveling. She's a traveler.
Well, I wish you the safe travels and thank you again for all your hard work.
Thank you.
Yep.
And Mr. Kelfis.
Julie, thank you for all your years of dedication. Congratulations on retirement, and your smile will definitely be missed around City Hall. Congratulations again.
Thank you.
Did you wanna say something?
Mr. Mayor, before Julie says anything, may I jump in real quick? Julie, so on behalf of the entire organization and the Public Works Department, many of them are here today. I think it's a testament to 27 years. And I'm glad we'll get the correction there on your certificate of appreciation, but I just kinda wanted to go through, because I asked for sort of the chronology associated with your growth here. And yes, Julie started December 1st, 1997 as a new hire management assistant, promoted in July 1, 2000 to CIP Specialist. I think that was a part-time position. In July 1, 2006, you were reclassified to a Senior CIP Specialist. July 1, 2009, full-time equivalent Senior Capital Improvement Program Specialist. In June of 2014, you were also promoted to Senior Management Analyst. And in July 2019, you were reclassified to your current title of Principal Management Analyst. So 27 years total. Again, on behalf of the entire city, I know the things that you worked on, and I'm grateful for all the CIP work, all the accounting work, all the invoicing work, all the grant work. You did an amazing job. You will be missed. And with that, I know there's one other person that wants to say a couple things. Mr. Pat Thomas, would you please come on up? Your supervisor, who will be recognizing right behind you. So, Pat?
Yeah, I just wanted to say thank you to Julie for all she's done. And in Temecula, we have a lot of really good or great teams, and the Public Works Team was no exception. So Julie was an instrumental part of the Public Works Team, the management team for Public Works. And at the last Public Works Week barbecue, I gave out some awards to different people, and the one I gave to Julie was the magician, right? And I think like Mayor Stu said a minute ago, she has the magic. She really makes things happen. There's so much in that department that gets handled by this woman that's really incredible. So I know she's gonna be super hard to fill, to replace her. So congratulations Julie, I hope you have a wonderful retirement, and just keep doing what you like to do.
Yes.
Oh, Mr. ... I'm sorry.
Go ahead.
One other thing, I was gonna mention Julie. Like a lot of long-term employees, we of course the tradition of giving a street sign out, but Julie has specifically, I understand you've requested that that be held until Friday, when we have kinda the all-employee kinda farewell thing. So Julie will get a street sign in her honor, just not tonight. We'll give it to you on Friday.
Okay.
We do have this lovely parting gift, so we will, we will get the photos with this.
And we'll also invite up, now's the time to go ahead and invite up not only this picture, but the Public Works Team that wants to go ahead and take the group shot with Julie and all of that as well, so...
And the city council.
And the city council as well.
That'd be great.
So I'm sure there's gonna be a few.
Thank you, this is great.
Greg Butler?
Greg Butler!
You're allowed to be in the photo.
Greg Butler, we see you back there.
Yeah, get down here.
If you can't see Shauna, she can't see you. Squeeze on in.
And Julie, if you, Julie, did you, did you wanna offer a few words on what you're doing, where you're going?
No.
Come on, last opportunity. Where are you going Julie?
First stop, New York.
Oh, very nice.
Yes, and then we'll see where it goes from there, because I wanna go, I wanna see a lot of the world. So I'll be out flying around and cruising around and driving around, so see a lot of this country and a lot of others. I can't wait to get my passport pulled up.
Awesome.
But thank you, everybody. Aaron, we've been together a long time, and we've seen it all. So, and Pat, one of the best bosses ever. Greg, yeah? Is that it? No. But you know, these two guys are amazing to work for and to be with for day in and day out, and the whole team. Public Works is amazing. It's been an honor and a privilege to be part of the organization and to see so many things change. I've come out here since early 90s, and it's changed so much. So I'm just thankful to have been a part of it and to have a piece of it. So I drive around here and see things that, you know, for the monies that we've collected and garnered in grants, that helped get that Oberlin Bridge built, or you know, the Temecula parking ride, and you know, everything from a sidewalk to a bridge across the freeway. So very fortunate. Thank you.
All right, I believe we have another certificate for another guy retiring.
We do, we do. And this one, I have to admit, it's, even as your colleague Pat, this one's a little personal for me to read. You are hands down the best Public Works Director I have ever had the opportunity in my 20-plus year career to work with, and you're gonna be missed on so many levels. It's because, hold on, hold on, it's because Greg Butler was the Assistant City Manager when I joined. He was done being the Public Works Director. So that's why I can clearly say that, but thank you for everything. With that, we are proclaiming today Patrick Thomas Day. It's one day Pat, not every year, today in 2024. That's it. So whereas the city of Temecula congratulates Patrick Thomas, Director of Public Works, City Engineer, for his retirement after three years in the private sector and 37 years in the public sector, including seven and a half years of service with the city of Temecula. And whereas in his role as Public Works Director, Mr. Thomas successfully completed multiple projects improving the quality of life in Temecula, which will extend its benefits for future generations to enjoy. And whereas his legacy remains rooted in the improvements of various city facilities, including but not limited to the construction of the new Margarita Recreation Center, the modernization of the Mary Phillips Senior Center and Shuffleboard Complex, the renovation of the CRC Pool Complex and Splash Pad, 16 theme playground replacements, and improvements of Sam Hicks Monument Park. And whereas as the Public Works Director, he successfully saved the city millions of dollars, such as through the acquisition of 7,500 streetlight retrofit to LED, saving the city $750,000 per year, and the implementation of the Smur Solar Generation Facility, saving the city approximately $60,000 per year. And whereas he led the charge on the second largest project in city history, construction of $135 million I-15 French Valley Parkway Phase 2 with the $50 million InfraGram. And whereas Mr. Thomas has managed 900-plus million-dollar five-year CIP budget, the largest in city's history. And whereas he also managed a $5 million STIP fund, STIP funds for the start of the I-15 French Valley Parkway Phase 3 Overpass, and the management of HSIP Grants Fiber Optic Communication, Traffic Signal Coordination. And whereas additional projects led by Mr. Thomas include the start of construction on the 17 Court Pickleball Complex, the completion of the I-15 State Route 79 South Interchange Improvements, I-15 Congestion Relief Auxiliary Lane Project, ATP Grants Santa Gratuitas Creek Bike Pad Trail Projects, the completion of Marietta Creek Phase 2A in Old Town, and starting Phase 2B Rancho California to Winchester, and the implementation of the Pavement Management Program and numerous pavement rehabilitation projects. And whereas during his time here, Mr. Thomas facilitated the creation and implementation of the Communications Master Plan and the Citywide Facilities Condition Assessment and Replacement Plan. And whereas the city of Temecula sincerely thanks Mr. Patrick Thomas for his significant contributions, which have made Temecula a highly desirable place to live, work, and play. And now therefore, the mayor on behalf of the city council and the city of Temecula hereby proclaims July 23rd, 2024 to be Patrick Thomas Day.
So as you all can see, Pat has been a part of the modernization of Temecula. I mean, literally, you have taken Temecula into the next decade, I mean, the next generation in all the improvements that are taking place in the city today. I mean, just the freeway project, that alone, overseeing that for the last eight years. And people don't know, he and I are twins. We literally came on city coun... I came on city council, he took over Public Works almost the same week. So I like to call him my twin, but he, he has done an... what's that? Yes, exactly. So he, he's been an amazing Public Works Director, as you just heard. And so we are very proud and thankful of your almost eight years here in the city of Temecula, and you're gonna be a hard man to replace. Ron's, Ron's gotta put on his big boy shoes for sure for this one. So, all right, councilmember Alexander, we'll start with you.
All right. Well, Pat, I just wanna say, first, I will never forget the day when you forgot my name. I will never forget that, and I, it just, it, you know, I don't know, I just have always loved working with you. I just wanna say thank you, because since I've come on the council now almost four years ago, the information that I've learned, the times that you've sat down with me, the talks about bike riding and life and things like that, you've just been an instrumental part of my life here, growing up as a city councilwoman, and I know how much you've done here with everybody, and not just so much with the infrastructure, but you, you really left a part in each person's heart. So I think you, you are gonna be really missed, and I just thank you again for all that you've done, and I, I hope everything's gonna go well for you in your next job, because now you're not retiring, I guess officially. So thanks again, Pat.
Mayor Potem.
Pat Thomas, you were probably the one that I've spoken to the most on city staff besides our city manager Aaron throughout my short term here. And I have to say that as Temecula, we hold our staff to an extremely high standard, and you met and exceeded that standard throughout my time, and it sounds like throughout everyone's time here. And I truly know that you will be missed, and Public Works for Cities is truly the, and quite literally, the foundation of cities. You can tell the quality of a leader by the team that has been built and the team that surrounds him. And leaving your legacy with Ron right behind you, you can tell what a great leader you were by what a great leader Ron will be. So you will be absolutely missed. I thank you for the public work staff that you have created and taught and led them to be where we are today. So you'll be missed. Enjoy your not-so-quick retirement into your next job, and we hope the best for you.
Councilmember Schwank.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Pat, I just wanna again just say how much I appreciate you and the time that we've had together here at the city. I think your proclamation's the only one in 10-point font, by the amount of words that Randy read, 12 wouldn't fit. It's very impressive. And I was thinking before I came here today, I was kinda thinking about all the ribbon cuttings, right? And then in the conference center earlier today, there was a ton of photos on the wall of the ribbon cuttings, and, and really the imprint you've left on the community in just such a short time. It's really impressive. I appreciate the, your professionalism obviously, but, but your heart. And that would, when I would show up somewhere, whether it's a ribbon cutting here, you'd get really close and you'd have this really good news for me, like, hey, we got this grant, or we're working on this project, or things are happening, and, and you always sort of met me with that. Like, these are things that are, that matter to the community, and you're delivering them, you know, for the community, and it's really quite wonderful. And so I'm certainly proud of the time that I got to spend with you, and you'll certainly be missed. So just thank you for everything you've done, Pat. Appreciate it.
Patrick Thomas, oh my gosh. You know, it was mentioned, all of your skills here in the city of Temecula, and I think back, and it's hard to believe, it's only been seven and a half years that a lot of this stuff has been accomplished. And, and I remember sitting in with the vacancy, Greg and I, and I think I have to give Greg a ton of credit, because he knew you were kind of a free agent out there in the local government world. And we strategized about how to lure you to the city of Temecula with this robust planned capital improvement program, and a guy like you that had the passion, had the will to carry out millions and millions and millions of dollars worth of infrastructure. And we, we hired the right guy, Greg, did we not? And, and Pat, I'm, I'm certainly grateful having had the chance to work with you here, and, and obviously the team, you're well-respected, and the culture. And for those that don't know, the Public Works Department is the largest operating department in the city of Temecula. It's complex, it's diverse, it's got multiple divisions and disciplines, and, and then you heard about the capital improvement program, which is just massive in terms of our five-year planning, engineering, design work, and construction. It's, it's a lot. It's a big lift, and it requires a ton and ton of diligence and effort, and you've done that really well. But maybe what many people don't know is Pat and I go back to the early 80s. And I know we're celebrating a career that spans 40-plus years as a professional engineer, civil engineer, but Pat Thomas came up under the tutelage of my father, Mike Adams, at the city of Escondido. And you all worked together for decades there, and I, I need to tell you, Pat, you know, my dad had the utmost respect for you as a professional civil engineer, probably more so than anybody I've ever been around. And he saw something in you, and it obviously played out in your career, having been very successful in local government. And he talked about you in such high praise. And I know you remained friends long after you left the city of Escondido, and I feel super fortunate that our paths got to cross, working together for the seven and a half years. So again, on behalf of the entire organization, the executive team here, Pat, thank you for caring. You cared about the city of Temecula, and it showed in all of your work. So thank you, my friend.
So Pat, there are a number of individuals that came earlier to your reception, and some of them might still be hanging out here. But we wanted to acknowledge that tonight, we had individuals from CRNR, Eastern Municipal Water District, Riverside County Flood Control and Water Conservation District, Rancho Water, Riverside County Transportation Commission, our local legislator, Southern California Edison, the gas company, Temecula Valley Chamber, Visit Temecula Valley, Western Riverside Council of Governments. So you are not, this isn't just about our city here. You are well-respected, my friend, in the region and beyond. So thank you very much. At this time, we would actually invite anybody that is here from outside agencies or just... oh yes, we have that too. So it's up to you, Pat, if you wanna go ahead and open that big surprise that I'm sure you know nothing, you have no idea what it is. And then you wanna go ahead and say a few words, but we definitely wanna make sure that we get those pictures with your team and everybody that's out here from other agencies as well.
Whoever decided on the wrapping paper, bonus points.
And then Pat, after you're done wrapping, we wanna hear from you too. I'm sure you have plenty to say. He's like, I have nothing to say. No, you have plenty to say. All right, so if you wanna turn around and we can take some pictures there? Pat Thomas, congratulations. All right, let's hear the speech. Let's hear the speech, and then we'll take pictures.
Wow, it's a little overwhelming to be on this side of the, of the dais and get all that praise. So, but you know, Temecula has many great teams, and I think a lot of what happens here is because of all these great teams that all work together. The city council is a great team, and it's been my honor and privilege to work for this city council. Past city councils, I see Marianne Edwards here, I know I've talked to Mike Nigaro, Jeff Camachero, so there's just a history of leaders of this community that have really made it what it is. And so that team is hugely important in guiding and directing the city. The executive team, so Aaron, Kevin, Luke, and all the other directors, just a great team to work with and work for for the last seven and a half years. And can't say enough about everybody and the professionalism and the, the way that they conduct themselves and are experts in their field and are able to really set the tone for what happens in this organization. It's, it's just, it was just my privilege to work with all them. And then the Public Works Team, so Julie, there she is, Rod Tidwell, Amir Atar, I know he's, he's probably the next one you're gonna see up here, is he still here? Avlin O'Dvr, Ron Marino, just a great team, and, and you know, things don't happen, it's not just one person. All those things that you heard, that was just not me. There was a whole team of people that, that made all those things happen, and it was just my pleasure to be, to be part of that and to, to really experience that all. The, the, you know, so it was, it was my pleasure to really, I'll call it, conclude my career in public service with the city of Temecula. So I spent about 37 years in public service. I started when I was 12, so 49 and, and no more public service. But it, that's always really been, been my passion, is to be of service and be able to provide the community with services and infrastructure that really makes it a great place to live. And Temecula obviously is a, is a really super place to live. So that's been, been great. I didn't know I was gonna get my own day, so thank you for making this Patrick Thomas Day. And you know, it's, it's the small things, right? So one of the, one of the projects, one of kind of my last projects, was to get the marquee sign at the MRC. So I got, Kevin actually sent me a picture of the sign, it's actually up and in place now, and I got my face on the sign on the first day, so... so that was, that was super fun, and, and you know, just, just really nice to see that. And you know, like I said, it's, it's a small thing, it's a lot, a lot of small things and that accumulate and really go into making... and really go into making things great. And so, this has been, been great for me to be here for the last part of my career. It's really been the pinnacle of my career. Definitely, city of Temecula is by far the best city that I've worked for. I've worked for five different cities, and city of Temecula is by far the best and will always be the best. And so, and I'd also like to thank all the folks from the other agencies that came, Juliana, Shawna, Dan, from all the Adam that Brooke came for this. I truly appreciate you coming and being here for today. So, thank you.
And I think there's somebody in the audience, right?
So there is, right here, my wife, Pam, and son Davis, and they put up with a lot of listening to me and putting up with my, I'll call it complaints, but there really weren't complaints, just stress and, and, you know, like I said, being on this side of the counter, the dais, it's really, you know, definitely a little less stress, you kind of can take a breath and. And Randy, I remember Randy, like, in the last few meetings we had, and, you know, as I was kind of like coming to the end of my time, Randy would say, huh, this is the unfiltered Pat Thomas, huh?
Well, on that note, Pat, we'll go ahead and take some pictures now.
Well, thank you again for everybody, and I truly appreciate your recognition and the ability to be of service to the city of Temecula.
Awesome. All right, and we want to, we want to go ahead and invite up all of Pat's friends from other regions, agencies that came up, and please be a part of this picture that we can give to Pat afterwards. And then the PW staff as well. Make sure you can see Shawna, so she can see you. Taller folks in the back. Well done. Congratulations, Patrick Thomas.
All right, we will now move into board and commission reports, and we'll start with, no, that one's gone, yeah, Community Service Commission, Mr. Jeff Kingsburg.
All right, well, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Good evening, everyone. I'm going to provide a report for you on the Community Services Commission meeting from Monday, July eighth, earlier this month. And you can see across the screen, our esteemed commissioners, I won't recall all their names, you've seen us before, it's the same group that's been in the seats, and have a great, great group to work with. So, go to the next slide, thank you. So, at our last meeting on July eighth, we received a June recap and division report highlights, first from the Community Services and Recreation, from Brittany Say, Office Specialist. I have a few highlights from that report, you can see in the photos. In the month of June, there were three hundred and fifty-eight classes and camps offered from the city, and there were about seven thousand participants as a total. At the library, the monthly door count was twenty-one thousand, solid door count. And in June, the first two summer concerts took place, and there were an average of nine hundred attendees at those two concerts. The commission spoke to the fact there's been positive feedback on moving the Sunset Market to Thursdays with the concerts and using the Civic Center Quad as the regular venue. And I imagine those numbers will probably go up on Thursday, because I know we have that final concert with Classic Journey. So, anyway, we appreciate that report from Brittany. And then, the second report was on cultural arts and community outreach, and that was from Hilda Nieto, who's a senior office specialist. And one of the things that was focused on was the summer food service program. And again, that program started in June on the seventeenth, so it really started the second half of the month, but just in those almost two weeks, there were fifteen hundred and seventy meals served, and that continues through August ninth. I've been assisting staff serve on Mondays over at Mike Nagar Park, and it's great to rub elbows with the staff and interact with community members in that setting. It's really positive to get, to see those kids get their lunch. Also, the Mary Phillips Senior Center served as the Cool Center, and you can see the three hundred and four participants for June. I know we're almost through July now, and I'm sure those numbers will go up in July. I would think they would go up astronomically, is what we've experienced in July. And finally, as far as our consent calendar and our director's report and commissioner's report, we approved our action minutes from our previous meeting on June tenth. That was done by unanimous vote of four to zero, with Commissioner Adi abstaining. And then in our director's report and commissioner's report, there's quite a bit of focus, obviously, on the Fourth of July events. That's big for our department. First, we want to give appreciation to Don Adamaic and Tracy Tominas for their long hours worked in collaboration with fellow staff across various city departments to pull off those two events, first the parade and then the extravaganza in the afternoon. Our commissioners, who were all at the parade, by the way, with family and participating, did view the parade as a success. It was reported that attendance was slightly up from two thousand twenty-three, while parade entries were a bit lower. The extravaganza at the sports park was obviously a huge draw, with an estimated twenty-five thousand coming out throughout the day. We did have an initial light discussion about the continued ability of TCSD to continue to hold both events on the same day, and we threw out a couple just light discussion options on that. Anyway, it was a good meeting. Our next meeting, as you can see, is Monday, August twelfth, two thousand twenty-four, at six P.M. in these chambers. Thank you very much.
Thank you. All right, we'll go to the Ready Commission, Mr. Eric Falk.
Thank you, Mayor, City Council staff. Before I get started, I wanted to say thank you to Julie and Pat for their service to the city as well. So with that being said, the Ready Commission report. As you can see, the commissioners there, I won't read their names, but they've been amazing and continuing to do the work of the Ready Commission. And the description of the Ready Commission is, "Commission reviews and make recommendations on topics of diversity and inclusion within city events, services, programs, and policies, and enhance community relations." Our last meeting was thirteen June twenty twenty-four. Next slide. During that meeting, we received a presentation on Pride and presented a related proclamation. The presentation included the following introductory comments from Chair Faulkner, a video outlining the importance of the celebration, a presentation by Commissioner Evan Toth regarding census data and historical information, a video message from Supervisor Washington and Mayor Stewart, reading of the proclamation by Chair Faulkner, comments from TCSD regarding monthly events and public comments. Continued discussion of future homeownership opportunities for youth and review-related presentations. The commission continued their discussion from the February eighth, twenty twenty-four, and April eleventh, twenty twenty-four meetings. The commission also received presentations from Habitat for Humanity, the Economic Development Coalition, and the Riverside County Housing Department regarding which of the identified barriers they are already working to address and how. For the next steps, the commission will confirm the gaps and prepare a final recommendation to the city council for presentation at a joint meeting. Next slide. Ready Commission's next meeting, all are invited, please come and enjoy the opportunity to really celebrate our residents. August eighth, twenty twenty-four, at six P.M. in council chambers right here, as July meeting was canceled for the summer recess. That's my report for tonight.
Thank you. All right, so we'll move on to public safety report with Captain Chris Durham.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, City Council, city team, and city residents. In the month of June, your deputies responded to fifty-six hundred and seventy-three calls for service. Year-to-date, it's a little over thirty-four thousand. That brings the average call for service in June to about a hundred and ninety calls. Our efforts, next slide, please, to enforce and educate e-bikes and e-motorcycle awareness will still continue. It's been my opinion that as I'm driving around, I'm seeing more kids with helmets, more kids being safe. So I appreciate the city and the deputies and our efforts to make the city safe. However, if I see something that doesn't have foot pedals and a crank on it, it's a motorcycle and it's going to get towed. So this young man was involved in a minor traffic collision. He was sixteen on Butterfield Stage, and he cited for, without having a driver's license, and the bike is now impounded. And we will continue our efforts on e-bike awareness. Next slide, please. I wanted to take a moment, long before the city of Temecula was formed, there were residents here, there were deputies here, and just like your deputies today, they responded to calls for service. And this one happened on July eleventh, nineteen seventy-four, at an apartment complex off of Yenez, just south of Rancho, California. Deputy Schrader was dispatched to a domestic violence call and a child custody dispute. And when he arrived on scene, he was ambushed by the suspect and murdered. I was able to attend his fiftieth anniversary memorial ceremony at his graveside, and although it was fifty years ago, his sergeant was there, some of his beat partners and the dispatchers were there, his wife was there. And it was nice to see them gather around and have good fond memories of Deputy Schrader and talk about the days of policing before the city of Temecula existed. And it was a solemn reminder of the dangers that deputies go to for domestic violence-related incidences. And so, I just wanted to thank the city council for their support for the deputies, and also the city council's decision to honor Deputy Schrader at a memorial that's being designed here in Old Town, right outside the Old Town Sheriff's Substation. It's a, it's a nice touch that his memory keeps going. Thank you. And if there's any questions, I'll take them now.
I do have one question.
Yes, sir.
So when a e-motorcycle is impounded, how long is it impounded, and what's the average cost of getting that bike back?
The impound fees will depend on what the individual is charged with, but just typically, roundabout, if you're an unlicensed driver and you're operating a vehicle that is unregistered, it could be subjected to a thirty-day impound. So you're looking at hundreds of dollars to get the bike back. And that's one of the reasons why I want to educate, because I'd like to avoid that occurring. So I want parents to be aware, please don't buy your kids e-motocycles. They have to be registered, they have to be licensed, your kid has to have a valid driver's license with a motorcycle endorsement, but it's hundreds of dollars to get that out by the time it's done, not to mention the citation process of potential fines and the court issues as well, increased insurance costs. It's a ripple effect that I'd just like to avoid.
Perfect, thank you. All right, public comments, do we have any public comments?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, we have two public comments on non-adjourned items. Each speaker is limited to three minutes. The balance of the rules are available on the agenda. First speaker is Mark Swerengen, to be followed by Jack Guerrero.
Good evening, City Council. I'm here once again to remind you that I am trying to have the city update their policies towards sports field allocations. It strikes me that we, as a city, are far behind other cities in terms of how we allocate fields. Just right now, my wife has taken my daughter down to San Diego for a soccer practice, and one of the reasons for that is because there is consistency, we know when practices are in, with the club down in San Diego. However, I have an older daughter that's in a club here in town, and with the monthly allocation that the city uses, there's no certainty of when practices are going to be held for any of the clubs around here, because the city has antiquated practices that don't necessarily serve the residents, don't necessarily serve the taxpayer. So, until November, I'm going to be here reminding you, in a, in a election year, that you need to serve your citizens. Mr. Mayor, I was, I have missed last month in reminding you, and part of the reason was because I was in Denver for a National Premier League soccer final. My girls didn't win, but I want you to know that the U-16 boys from the Southwest Soccer Club, who I have no affiliation with, did win one for Temecula. So it would be great if you recognized them. So, hopefully, that can happen. Now, part of my problem is I've had to put this on an agenda, to try to get on the record city council members, city staff, to change the policy. Well, I need somebody to take it up and bring it to an agendized item. I went today to the Parks Department Committee, headed by Councilman Chrank, and I noticed that one council member, Ms. Alexander, brought something to the agenda off of just one single citizen's request for pickleball stuff. So I'm hoping that you will look in yourselves and say, how come this guy comes here every month, every two weeks, asking for something? Could somebody put this on an agenda so we can look at how city staff allocates soccer fields? So you serve your citizens, you serve your residents. And Mr. Calphus has done a great job and met with a bunch of folks, and I appreciate that. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Swerengen. The next and final speaker is Jack Guerrero.
Good afternoon, ladies and gentlemen, members of the board. It's a delight to be here this afternoon. I wanted to address a few disparate items on and off the agenda. First of all, just some constructive feedback. I've noticed that on the consent calendar, you've got a number of very consequential items for consideration. I think that the consent calendar should really be reserved for normal course, recurring, non-controversial, even ministerial-type items in nature, as opposed to very controversial or consequential items. You've got on here things like contracts, expenditure of funds, and of course, one item that I would like to address specifically, which is an amendment of Titles nine and seventeen of the Temecula Municipal Code. This is under Agenda Item Number Five of the Consent Calendar. So let me just take a few moments on this. I'd like for somebody on the council to bring back this item. I know it's the second reading, and, you know, you intend to basically ram it through on this occasion, but I think it's worth discussing. I'd like to know what specific businesses you envisage for Temecula under this new classification for alcohol consumption. Under a flexible reading of the ABC Code, under California Code of Regulations, very seedy adult-themed establishments would be permitted for Temecula with minors present. So for example, comedians with adult-themed topics could show up under this classification, exotic dancers, drag queen shows, et cetera, permitting children to be present. So I'd like to know what specifically you envision under this classification, and what protections will exist in the municipal code. I didn't see any that would safeguard children and families. Remember, this community is still a family-friendly community, it is still a Christian value community, and I think that those, those values need to be represented. Finally, I'd like to encourage approval of resolution endorsing Proposition Thirty-Six- Finally, I'd like to encourage approval of resolution endorsing Proposition Thirty-Six. This is a very important public safety-themed proposal for state government, and I think a number of cities and counties and organizations, including the League of California Cities, is standing firmly behind this proposal, and I would encourage this council to similarly endorse it. Thank you very much.
Mr. Mayor, that concludes public comments on non-agendized items.
All right, so we will go on to city council reports. Does anybody have a report? Mr. Schwank?
Mr. Mayor, I do have one report, and we'll just go ahead and roll the video. I'm Councilmember Zach Schwank. You're probably wondering how I got into this mess. Let's rewind. There's nothing I love more than supporting Temecula's local small businesses, especially unique small businesses. Thinking about flying to New York? Forget about it!
Forget about it. Forget about it, eh? Forget about it.
We've got the closest thing to East Coast pizza, right here in Temecula. This shop has been in town-
For eleven years.
And they make their pizza dough with water filtered at a pH of seven.
So you can get that crispy pie.
A lovely cheese pizza, just for me.
And this shop employs our local workforce, feeding our community in more ways than one. And every dollar spent here supports our local economy. When you shop local, your money is used to support local schools, jobs, roads, and more.
I like the sound of that.
So join us in shopping local. Dine with your neighbors, support your neighbors and your city. All right, well, that's the latest little reel Instagram that we made highlighting some of the local businesses in our community. And when I started thinking about what I could do this year with Council Spotlight, I wanted to make sure we highlighted some of those businesses. So that's Times Square Pizza up off Rancho Cal. Great spot. Go get some pizzas, some bagels, and show them some love, because they're truly just a great part of our community. And I look forward to my next Council Spotlight.
That's awesome.
Thanks.
Do you have anything? Do you have anything? Okay, so I do have two things. Let's talk about this. Oh, yeah, this is the concert series. So this is our final concert this year. It's at City Hall on Thursday, seven o'clock, but you want to get here early, because this journey band, the lead singer is Chad Smith, and if you've never heard him sing, he's incredible. He sounds just like Steve Perry, in my opinion. I mean, he's incredible. So it's going to be a full house. I mean, our quad can hold probably two thousand people, and I'm envisioning there'll be about two thousand people here. So you want to get here early, set up your chairs, make sure you're in a good spot, and it's going to be a great concert. Plus, come early, because the Sunset Market will be going on, so there's plenty of food, there's things you can buy, and that Bigfoot hot dog that's in that picture, incredible, by the way. It's massive. It's a two-person hot dog, so, corn dog. So come early, eat a lot, and enjoy a great summer concert. And then I've got a workforce housing, or it could be called affordable housing. They're kind of interchangeable, affordable workforce housing. It's pretty much all the same, and we actually have a live dashboard, now live, that you can actually go there. If you're looking for affordable housing, you can take a picture of this QR code, it'll take you right to this page, it'll tell you how to apply for the units that are available. There's nine hundred and two that are currently, but we have, I think, another couple hundred coming online with the projects that are being built right now. So if you're looking for affordable housing and you fall into that lower-income category, which a lot of people are falling into that category, so don't think your income is too high to not be able to get into one of these programs. So QR code, take you straight there, fill out the application, and keep your fingers crossed. So that's our affordable workforce housing that's available right now. So, all right, so now we're on to the consent calendar. We'll go item number one, waive reading of title and text of all ordinances and resolutions included in this agenda. Number two, approve action minutes of July 9th, 2024. Number three, approve list of demands. Number four, approve Treasury's report of April 30th, 2024. Number five, adopt ordinance number 2024-3, amending Titles Nine and Seventeen of the Temecula Municipal Code to add and implement a Class Four Establishment License, second reading. Number six, adopt ordinance number 2024-4, amending Chapter 8.48 Heritage Tree Ordinance of the Temecula Municipal Code in its entirety to establish the City of Temecula Protected Tree Ordinance, second reading. Number seven, adopt resolution to establish the amount of the voter-approved Measure C Annual Special Levy, Tax Levy for the fiscal year 2025. Number eight, approve agreement with Care Solus, Inc. for twenty-four-seven Essential Healthcare Support and Coordination. Number nine, approve amended memorandum of understanding with the Teamsters Local 9/11 and related salary schedule in compliance with AB 1484. Number ten, authorize sole-source purchase of Evanrod- Evro- Evropod Lipatrap Catch Basin Filters to comply with statewide trash ordinance order Number eleven, accept improvements and file the notice of completion for the citywide Slurry Seal fiscal year 2022 through 2023, PW 23-16. And I will accept the motion.
Move to approval. Oh, a second.
Mayor, I'd like to pull five and eight, please.
All right, we have a request for five and eight to be pulled, so let's vote on the remainder right now. All right, so we're pulling number five. Go ahead.
Wonderful. All right, Mayor, thank you so much for your time. City Council, thank you. Number five, looking at the first one here that I'd like to highlight, talking about the Class Nineties, I had some good discussion with staff and also myself, and here we go again, City Councilmember Zach Schwank. And we had a good discussion as a possibility that maybe we can, as a group, move forward and look at maybe setting up some boundaries to be able to safeguard the children of the cities. So one of the things that I would like to propose to the city council is if you guys push this forward, if within the next, say, thirty days or forty-five days, we can look at a possible amendment looking at having a parent or a guardian be with a child if they're going to enter into the establishment. I think this will at least give a safeguard to the city and to the kids of this town. The only issue is we have to look at it legally, so that's why we're asking for those thirty days to see if it'd be something we can move forward with legally through the state of California. If not, we would just push forward. So I'm asking if this amendment could be a possibility, coming back into the subcommittee and then pushing it out forward to the city council. And so I just want to get your guys' consent or conversation about what this would look like.
So what you're asking, though, is we vote on it today, but we bring it back to the subcommittee to see if we can put another layer of protection on-
Exactly.
Okay, yeah. I'm good with that.
Okay.
Yeah.
I absolutely agree with that.
Okay.
All right, so I'm going to hold where I was until it moves forward, speaking to Peter, but I think this is a way that at least we can, I appreciate if we can just safeguard, just have the conversation.
Okay.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Did you want to say anything?
No, I think we need to make a pretty clear motion, though, to get this through. So if you'd like to make that motion, and then we can follow up in a second.
So I'd like to make a motion that we just create amendment within the subcommittee to be able to possibly put in safeguards of having parents and guardians there with children.
I think we need to vote on the item first, and then we bring that back as an agenda item to look into, yes.
Correct. So the motion is actually going to be the recommended motion to go ahead and approve the second reading. And then you can also have a secondary motion to go ahead and provide direction to staff to go ahead and look into this and bring it back. So we're going to do one motion first. This will be to approve the second reading. So I need a motion and a second to approve the second reading.
Motion. Second.
So please vote. All right, so now, if you want to make another motion-
All right. So I'd like to make a motion that we can have an amendment to this agenda item for number five, the first part of it, to be able to allow or only allow children to enter into these types of establishments with a parent or guardian to be able to enter into them.
So I want to clarify, just to make sure I understand, the motion is actually to refer the item to staff through the subcommittee to look into a potential amendment in regards to adult-accompany minors, correct?
That's correct.
And vetting it through the city attorney-
Subcommittee, yeah, it's a referral to the subcommittee.
Okay.
So I need a second on the motion?
Second. All right, so what was the, it was item?
Five.
What, no, what was the next one?
Eight.
Eight.
Thank you, gentlemen.
All right, so I believe you just want to make a statement about it, not necessarily-
Yeah, nothing wrong. No, this is just, I'm actually going to ask if Ms. Erika Russo can give a staff report on this. This has actually been something I've been working on with staff for the last eight months. I think it's been, it's been since October, and I'm just very excited to see this agenda item hopefully be moving forward and just the way it's going to really be able to help our city in many ways, not just our residents, but our businesses, our nonprofits, our first responders, and beyond. So Erica, if you can just give me, please, a staff update and also what we're looking at as to how we're going to extend this out to the public and how they can be notified and send it out to even the people within their neighborhoods.
Yes, indeed. So the item before you this evening is to approve a contract with an organization called Care Solus. Care Solus provides healthcare, mental healthcare and substance, I'm sorry, mental and behavioral healthcare navigation services. And even just saying that is a bit complicated, and I think at times, this can be a little bit difficult to understand. So when Councilmember Alexander first brought this to staff and asked staff to look into it, we kind of spun our wheels for a little bit, trying to just wrap our heads around exactly what we were looking at, because it really is a service unlike anything else we had come across. And it turns out, that's exactly what makes it so valuable, is it's a service that is not something we've dealt with before. So Care Solus is an organization that is dedicated to connecting individuals with the resources they need to address mental and behavioral healthcare concerns. And we hear that term a lot, mental health, behavioral health. That encompasses everything along the gamut from very common anxiety and depression, which who among us has not experienced that in the last several years, to substance abuse disorder, alcoholism, eating disorders, anything that affects your mental well-being. And as you can imagine, those issues have an enormous societal and economic impact to the community. So if there's been one, I think, very positive outcome of the last few years, particularly post-COVID, it's that we're seeing a destigmatization of these discussions. I mean, most of us in this room are old enough to remember a time when seeking help or needing to seek help for any of these issues was incredibly stigmatized. And while fortunately now, we're seeing an increased acceptance of the need for people to seek help for mental and behavioral health issues, sometimes how to do that is still very difficult. So even for people who have healthcare insurance, if you've ever tried to navigate your own healthcare provider and figure out what benefits you had, how they applied, and where to get help, you know how difficult that can be, even for something as simple as just a routine medical issue. But now, if you compound that with being an individual or a family member who is struggling with a mental health issue or substance abuse issue, if you have, for instance, a teen in crisis, if you have an elderly individual struggling with depression or anxiety, any of these issues compound the difficulty of trying to access the help you need. So when we say Care Solus is a navigator, that's exactly what they do. They walk alongside the individual, and they navigate this incredibly complex and at times very cumbersome system to ensure that they are able to connect that individual with the resources they need. Now, as we started looking into this, one of the concerns we had was, how does that benefit the number of people in our community, unfortunately very high, who may not have access to healthcare coverage? This is great if you have coverage, what if you don't? Well, approximately fifty percent of their connections in Riverside County have been involving individuals who either use public healthcare or have no healthcare at all. So it's not just a resource for those who have privatized individual health coverage. This truly can benefit anyone. That said, Care Solus works primarily so far with school districts, so they've actually been partnered with Temecula Valley Unified School District and Marietta Unified School District, and then recently also partnered with the city of Marietta. So any students who have been enrolled in TVUSD are actually able to access Care Solus benefits through TVUSD. However, there are a lot of people in our community who don't have students in TVUSD, and what this contract does is it expands the service to anyone, any resident within the city of Temecula, as well as our businesses, and any individuals experiencing homelessness within the city of Temecula. So as you can imagine, that has immense public benefit in terms of our public safety, ensuring people are connected with the services they need, as well as just enhancing the quality of life in Temecula, which is obviously something we hold very high priority. So the contract before you, the agreement before you, is for one initial one-year term for one-hundred-and-sixty-six-thousand-five-hundred dollars, with an option at the end of the year to assess and say, you know, what kind of benefits did we actually materially receive from this? And if we determine it was of good benefit to the community, an option to extend the contract for three additional years. That cost breaks down to just over two dollars per resident per year. So when you look at the potential benefit that could be accrued from this agreement, we believe that it is extremely fiscally responsible use of funds. As Councilmember Alexander asked, we are putting together a comprehensive media program that will roll out this information to the community. We'll be having information on the website, connecting to Care Solus's resources, social media campaign, more video reels, which we all love doing. We're going to kind of push this word out as much as we can from every angle, because if it's this complicated for me to explain, we want to make sure that we can get that information out to the community as concisely and accessibly as possible. Any individual will be, if this contract is passed, any individual in the city will be able to access Care Solus through a phone call, scanning a QR code, or going directly to a website on the internet. So multiple ways of accessing the service, and they will walk you through and connect you to whatever resources you need. They currently are partnered with over thirty-one-hundred care providers in Riverside County alone. And yeah, I think that concludes my report, unless you have any questions.
That was wonderful. Thank you. I just want to just add, you know, after having the opportunity to sit with Anita, who is actually here, so I just want to thank you again for coming in and all of your time with our staff and myself and just breaking this down, it's been really helpful. But looking at the statistics, even from our sister city over there in Marietta, where within three months, there was over ninety-some on people who were saved that day from committing suicide. That's huge. And so for me, there are people hurting, there are people who are needing help, our kids need help, our family members need help. This goes out to nonprofits, everybody within our city, and extends to their families. So I just want you to please get the word out, we're going to actually have business cards, which is pretty neat. So I know a lot of the council members hold the business cards, or the first responders send it out to people who might need some help, and they have a QR code. So I just wanted to say thank you to the staff, say thank you to Anita for just allowing me to just bring this forward to you guys, and seeing if this is going to be something our city will really thrive with. So, thank you.
So you want to make the motion?
I'd like to make a motion to move Agenda Item Number Eight forward.
Oh, a second.
All right, it's been moved to second, please vote. All right.
Hold on. Yay, just thumbs up on that one. It's not working.
Okay, that passes four-zero. I will now adjourn the city council meeting in favor of Community Services.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Call Temecula Community Services District Meeting to Order. Madam City Clerk, please note that we're all still here. Do we have any public comments on non-agenda items?
No, we do have one comment on the public hearing.
Okay, noted. All right, we have one item on our consent calendar. Item twelve is approve action minutes of July 9th, 2024. I'll entertain a motion and a second to approve.
Move approval.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second.
No, we do have one comment on the public hearing.
Okay, noted. All right, we have one item on our consent calendar, item 12 is approve action minutes of July 9th, 2024. Entertain a motion and a second to approve.
Move approval.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Please vote. And that item passes four zero. We'll now move to the public hearing portion of our agenda. We have a one item, item 13, approved Temecula Community Services District propose rates and charges for fiscal year 2024-25. May we have a staff report, please?
You may. Good evening, Mr. President, Board Members, Ward Combers, Assistant Finance Director. I'll be giving the staff report tonight. The Temecula Community Services District provides a variety of services to city residents, including residential street lighting, perimeter landscaping, slope maintenance, recycling, refuse collection, and unpaved road maintenance within the city. These services are collectively referred to as TCSD service levels. Property owners only pay for the services used or made available to their property through separate charges on their property tax bills, which are calculated in the engineer's annual levy report prepared by the city's consulting firm, Web Municipal Finance, who are here tonight to answer any questions if need be. At tonight's public hearing, staff is requesting that the board adopt the rates and charges established for each service level for fiscal year 24-25. In accordance with Proposition 218, notices were mailed to all affected property owners 45 days prior to tonight's hearing. Collectively, it is estimated that the levies will generate approximately $12.8 million in total revenue across all four service levels for fiscal year 24-25. Property owners may request a hardship waiver or appeal the classification of their property and must submit their request by December 1st to the city's finance department. Rates for residential street lighting are proposed to remain unchanged from the current rates of $25.68 per single-family residence per year. There are a total of 29 zones within Service Level C, the perimeter landscaping and slope maintenance. Two of those zones have annual inflators that were previously approved through property owner elections, and the 24, 25 rates reflect the lesser of the CPI increase, or 5%. The CPI was calculated at 4.65% for this year, so the CPI increase of 4.65% will be applied. Rates within the remaining 27 zones will remain unchanged from the prior year. Rates for residential recycling and refuse services are calculated annually per the franchise agreement with CRNR. For fiscal year 24-25, the rate is proposed to increase $1.60 to a rate of $357.84 per household per year. The rate increase is a result of CPI of 2.39%. For Service Level R, unpaved street and road maintenance, that will remain unchanged from the prior year with a levy of $115.26 per single-family residence per year and $57.62 per vacant residential property. And that concludes the staff report. We're available for any questions.
Thank you very much, Ward, for the presentation. Are there any questions of word on this item? Okay, thank you. We'll go ahead and open the public hearing.
Yes.
And please call the first speaker.
Yes, Mr. President, we only have one speaker on this item, Austin Scola. Welcome, Austin, you have five minutes.
Good evening. So I just moved into Temecula from Marietta about a year ago, and I had different trash service in Marietta, and if there was an issue with the trash, you call in, and they could credit you if they had missed it, or they would say, oh, we'll come back around and we'll get it and stuff. So it was just a workable situation, I guess. So since we moved over to Temecula, I've had issues with them coming. I live in a spot right next to the Blueberry Farm, where it's kind of off the beaten path, I guess, it's not a maintained road by Temecula. And so I have another comment about that in my second part, but if they miss it, I have service on Friday, then I call in usually on Monday, because it could be anytime on Friday, and when I call in on Monday, they say, oh, we can't get there until the end of the day on Tuesday. So then I'll wait, Tuesday will come along, nothing happens on Tuesday sometimes, and then I have to call in on Wednesday and say, okay, I called in on Friday, didn't see anybody. I call in on Monday, then they say, okay, we'll send somebody out there Tuesday, and if nobody's there Tuesday, when I call on Wednesday, go, oh, now it's almost been a full week, so we'll just, you know, hit your house twice on Friday. It's like, well, now I have twice as much as I did before. Sometimes if it happened one time or it happened two times in a row, so I had three weeks of stuff that hadn't been taken care of. And when I said, you know, is there a way I can give credit, this or that, because there's no way you're gonna, you're not gonna be able to make up for three times where you guys have missed it. And he said, well, no, we can't, you know, do that, maybe we can send somebody out during the middle of the week, next week and stuff. And they were able to do that one time, but another time when they missed it, nobody came, and then by the, like I said, by the time I'm calling in on Wednesday because they missed it, then it's like, well, maybe we can get somebody out there Thursday. If nobody comes, then I'm all the way back to the next cycle of my garbage pickup. And so when I'm asking the people that answer the phones about it, there's just no really real accountability, and they don't seem to think that they have any tools to fix it other than, well, let me talk to the dispatcher, let me get them back out there. And, you know, the guy that runs the truck, I talked to him, he goes, well, we just go, you know, where they send us to go, and, you know, sometimes I can get back here, or sometimes it's a different guy, and he may not come back here. So it just didn't seem like there was a real solution to when it happens, was my thing. So I don't know, the contracts that you get with different garbage companies, whatnot and stuff, or what, you know, they do to resolve things and stuff, but it just didn't seem like they had a solution to fix it if they happened to miss it and stuff. It seemed like I kind of got in a cycle to where it's like, okay, it's missed, maybe they'll fix it. If they don't, then it can go like a couple of weeks before it gets fixed. The second part of my comment was, as far as the maintained roads or unmaintained roads, I live right next to the Blueberry Farm, and there is a lot of traffic that goes, you know, to the Blueberry Farm for a particular season, but then the two neighbors that are next to me, the Blueberry Farm, and then there's another one, use like the larger containers to get pulled off. And so those garbage trucks you have running on a Thursday for the larger containers, and then there's another garbage truck that will come for my cans, and it's a lot of wear and tear on the road that we maintain right now that's a blocktop. And I've only been there a year, and I've already paid to have a bunch of it, you know, repaired and stuff, just from those trucks going over it and stuff, versus just regular cars going over it. And I asked my one neighbor that, you know, maintains the blueberry thing as part of that, and he goes, oh, it costs so much, because they'd want to run fire hydrants down here, and they'd want a sidewalk and stuff, and be way too much to do. And I thought, well, I drive around Temecula, I see streets that don't have sidewalks, don't have fire hydrants and stuff, but are still maintained by the city. So I just thought it would be something like, maybe it can be looked into. It's, my address is 39075 Cantrell Road, and I'm down at the very bottom of the hill by the Blueberry Farm and stuff. So now it's coming around again, and there's a daycare center that you guys provided new construction for on the corner, and then I think there's another Jewish daycare center that's going right up next to it. So there'll be even more traffic going up and down that road, and I don't know how many businesses have to go in there before it's like, okay, maybe we should look into maintaining that road because there's so much traffic going up and down it. So, that's it. Thank you.
Sir, before you leave, make sure you leave your contact information with the city clerk so we can get in touch with you with your trash issue, okay?
Okay.
Thank you.
Is that on the pink paper?
It is. Mr. Cantrell, I do have your information, and I've already sent it over to the Public Works Director, who has already received it, and will be in contact with you.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Madam City Clerk, any more public comments?
There are none, sir. You're welcome to close the public hearing.
Okay, doing so, close the public hearing. If there are no comments from my fellow colleagues, go ahead and entertain a motion to approve.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Let's please vote. Okay, that passes five zero, thank you very much. Do we have a Director of Community Services report this evening?
Yes, just one slide this evening. I just wanted to remind everyone about our Ecosore Playground and Splash Pad Inclusive Social Skills Program. And this is a free program for individuals, for children with special needs, to help them engage in a really productive way and gain social skills in a super fun setting at the Splash Pad, which is located at Michael Mike Nigar Community Park over on Margarita Road. Registration's available on site, you don't have to pre-register for it, and if you have any questions, you can find more information on this program on our website. Thank you.
Thank you very much. General Manager, anything this evening?
Nothing further.
Board of Directors, anything? All right, we'll go ahead and adjourn to the August 13th meeting.
All right, I will convene the Temecula Public Finance Authority. Madam Secretary, please note we're all still here. Are there any public comments? All right, so we just had, we have two agenda items. Item number 14, approve action minutes of July 9th, 2024, and number 15, authorize fiscal year 2025 special tax levies for the Community Facilities District.
Move to approval.
All right.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded, please vote. All right, that passes four zero. Do we have an Executive Director report?
Nothing tonight, Mr. Mayor.
Anything from the Board of Directors? All right, I will adjourn that meeting and reconvene the Temecula City Council meeting, and we have a public hearing, which is item number 16, adopt weed abatement lien resolution for fiscal year 2024-25. May I have a staff report, please?
Good evening, Mayor and City Council. Tonight we'll be presenting on weed abatement, but I think it's really important that we share some of the public safety issues that weed abatement can prevent, so I've got a short clip for you this evening.
Thursday, July 6th, at 3:30 in the afternoon, firefighters responded to a vegetation fire near Frog's Leap Street and Butterfield Stage Road in unincorporated Temecula. The first engine in the area reported seeing three acres burning, but were having difficulty accessing the fire's location. Over time, the fire grew to seven acres and began threatening structures, at which point the incident commander ordered an aircraft response, 10 additional engines, four hand crews, and three water tenders. Thankfully, firefighters kept the fire from spreading into any residences, and the fire was contained by the following afternoon to 33 acres. Thursday, July 6th, at 3:30 in the afternoon.
Sorry about that. This fire was from a few years ago, but it was right on the edge of city limits, so it's really important that we understand that weed abatement is a crucial public safety campaign that we commit to every year. So we use this as a fire prevention tool, it protects our residents, property owners, and animals, of course, and also protects our law enforcement partners, fire folks as well. Property owners are required to maintain their property owners throughout the year, but we have renewed focus during peak fire season to prevent the spread of wildfire. How close is these dangerous areas to our community? Well, we've got high fire severity zones in and around the city, as you can see, and that Frog's Fire was from a few years ago, was just on the edge of the city limits. So benefits, again, public safety, a buffer zone for our law enforcement and firefighters. It's also one of our tools that we use to keep insurance rates lower in the community by having this proactive program. This is a voluntary program until folks do not commit to abating their property, but we really want the voluntary compliance. We don't want to be going on someone's property and abating it, we want them to find someone to take care of that and to do it in the most cost-effective way as possible. Property owners are notified of their responsibility to do this via mail every single year. A city manages the abatement process, we make sure that any costs incurred by the city are reflected and put on the tax rolls so that a property owner pays back the city for the cost of abating that property. This is transmitted to the county of Riverside, and they place that lien on the property. With that, staff's recommending approval of this resolution. If you have any questions, we're available for you this evening.
Any questions? All right. So I will accept the motion.
Mr. Mayor, you're welcome to go ahead and open the public hearing.
Oh, public hearing, that's right. I will open the public hearing.
And I will let you know we have no speaker, so you're welcome to close the public hearing.
I will close the public hearing. And no question? Okay, all right.
I do have one quick question, was everybody notified, and how were they notified about their issue, about the weed, their weeds, basically?
Yeah, great question. So we first off, start off with a public campaign, so in our city newsletter, we sent an email, I believe it was in April, to say, hey, weed abatement's coming, stay tuned. We maintain a website throughout the year that has weed abatement information on it. We also post the weed abatement deadline on there as well. We then send out certified mailings to each parcel on there, and that identifies the parcel, the property owner's information, and the deadline that they need to abate the property by. And then we can constantly are taking phone calls and answering questions about that as well. So we have multiple interactions with folks throughout that process.
Wonderful. And the certified mail, does somebody have to sign for that typically?
It depends, they do not always have to sign for certified mail. Some people, they don't sign the card, but we have tracking that shows that it was mailed, and there's a tracking number, and we can see when it's delivered.
Excellent. Well, thank you so much for your time and help.
Yeah, thank you. All right. I'll accept the motion.
Second.
All right. We've got a motion and a second, please vote. Vote.
Here.
All right, that passes four zero. So now we are off to item number 17, which is to consider adoption of a resolution supporting Prop 36 at Councilmember Alexander's request. May I have a staff report, please?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, I'll go ahead and provide a brief staff report, and then turn it over to Councilmember Alexander for additional comments. On July 9th, 2024, the City Council for the City of Temecula unanimously supported the placement of a resolution supporting Proposition 36 on the agenda at the request of Councilmember Alexander. A copy of the proposition text, as approved by the Secretary of State, was included in the agenda packet. On July 11th, 2024, the Board of Directors of the League of California Cities also supported Proposition 36, and numerous cities, counties, and other organizations are also in the process of supporting Proposition 36 as we speak. Proposition 36 is a partial rollback of Proposition 47, passed in 2014. If passed, Proposition 36 would first, increase penalties for trafficking hard drugs, including fentanyl; two, increase penalties for those who repeatedly engage in theft; three, add new laws to address smash and grabs and organized retail theft; and four, provide diversion programs for repeat offenders. It is recommended that the city council go ahead and discuss and give direction to adopt the resolution supporting Proposition 36, and direct staff to go ahead and disseminate copies of the resolution as needed and pursuant to law. With that, Councilmember Alexander, I'll go ahead and turn it over to you for your comments.
Thank you very much, Randy, I appreciate it. And thank you again to staff and City Council for allowing us to move forward. I think this is going to be very important in our state. One of the things I do love about it, it is a bipartisan proposition, and so both sides, everybody is jumping on board on this. They have lots of signatures, everybody from District Attorney Mike Hestron, the law enforcement throughout the state, all the different stores, big box stores, small mom and pop stores are getting on board with this because they don't want to continue to have to deal with the crime and people not getting punished for it. And I think it's time right now that we need to start looking at other ways and kind of going back to other ways to be able to hold people accountable for the crimes that they commit. So that being said, I just wanted to send this over to Chief, if I could, and just find out your perspective and how this is going to benefit not only our city but our state, and why Chad Bianco and law enforcement is getting behind this.
Thanks, Councilwoman.
You're welcome.
This is a no-brainer piece of legislation, because it deals specifically with the quality of life issues that we've been plagued with since Proposition 47. This piece of legislation will deal with your repeat offenders, whether it's your drug addicts, your drug dealers, and your organized retail theft, and give the tools necessary for the District Attorney's Office to hold them accountable when they're in court, because right now it's just the revolving door of the jail. They get booked, they get out, they get booked, they get out. And so this will deal with those that have been taking advantage of the system. And like Councilwoman said, it has bipartisan support. Your California State Sheriff's Association is supporting it, your California State District Attorneys Association is supporting it. Many of your large retailers are supporting this, and then locally Sheriff Bianco and District Attorney Mike Hestron, and it has my support as well. This will work, this will help us keep Temecula safe. Thank you.
All right, I think that's all I have.
All right. Well, I think we're all on board. I don't think there's anybody going to argue this point, so I'll accept a motion to move this thing.
Mr. Mayor, I would like to make one comment.
Sure.
In regards to Prop 36, one of the biggest pieces in that is, it's called Alexandra's Law, and I met with Mr. and Mrs. Capelluto Matt Christine, who Alexandra, she was actually a Temecula- a Temecula resident who passed away due to a fentanyl poisoning a few years ago, and Matt and Christine had been the biggest proponent behind getting Alexandra's Law passed. And what this bill, which is included in Prop. 36, will require is courts to read a warning to those convicted of certain fentanyl-related drug crimes to the individual that was arrested for that, for that crime. And it took them multiple years, and they couldn't even get out of the Public Safety Committee at the state level to get this on the floor to vote on it. And currently, we have something that's called a Watson advisement, which is a formal statement you must sign after being convicted of a DUI, which it says, "You understand that driving under the influence can injure or kill people, and it can be used against you if you ever cause a DUI accident in the future." This Alexandra's Law is a mirror to the Watson, Watson advisement in DUIs. This is just the drug-related version of the Watson advisement. And I think it's important that, like our Chief of Police said, and Councilwoman Alexander said, is this is a bipartisan bill, and as policymakers, we implement policies such as Prop. 47 that was implemented 10 years ago. And it's important to see how that policy or that proposition plays out in your state and at the local level. And I think we can all agree that Prop. 47 has been an unfortunate thing that has happened to our state, and Prop. 36 reverses the bad policy that was included in Prop. 47. So, I just wanted to, again, hit on how important Alexandra's Law will be, which is included in Prop. 36, how important that it is that this gets passed, and how crucial that it is, because it, this is a, this hits home because this is in Temecula. Alexandra was a Temecula resident. This happened to her, and moving forward, these criminals need to be prosecuted. And I just want to hit on one last stat that Mr. Capelluto hit me, told me recently, said, "Less than 2% of all drug deaths result in the conviction of a drug dealer." I'll read that one more time. Less than 2% of all drug deaths result in the conviction of a drug dealer. And doing drugs is a health issue. It's a mental health issue, but dealing drugs is a criminal issue. It's a criminal problem, and these individuals need to be prosecuted for dealing this deadly poison. That's all, Mayor. Thank you.
All right. So, someone want to move this item?
Move it motion?
Second.
All right, it's been moved and seconded. Please vote. All right, that passes 4-0. All right, so now we go to item number 18, Introduce Ordinance Amending Section 1028.010D of the Temecula Municipal Code Regarding Primaphysis Speed Limits on Certain Streets. Can I have a staff report, please, Mr. Moreno?
Thank you very much. So, this evening, we're going to have our traffic engineer, Nick Minichelli, and he's going to go ahead and give you the staff report.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and Council. This presentation is in regard to the Engineering and Traffic Survey update for 2024. A little background on engineering and traffic surveys, the California Vehicle Code requires that local authorities review and reaffirm or adjust speed limits every seven years on the basis of an engineering and traffic survey. The CBC allows the extension of existing surveys up to 14 years, provided that a registered engineer determines that no significant changes have occurred on the roadway. And significant changes on a roadway would include items such as roadway width, like widening, volumes, striping changes, property or land use changes, major changes. An engineering and traffic survey is made up of three main elements. The measurement of the prevailing 85th percentile speed on the roadway. This is done with the use of radar, and that determines the, the speed limit for the most part. Other factors include accidents. Those are reviewed to determine if there's a higher-than-average rate of collisions on a roadway. Additionally, other roadway characteristics are reviewed, such as alignment, visibility, obstructions, and land uses, amongst other things. For this engineering and traffic survey, we reviewed seven roadways and 24 segments within those roadways. We did these reviews because they were nearing the seven-year update limit, and we considered these roads had some changes on the roadways that would require us to update the engineering and traffic survey. Based on the, the speed survey, you can see these roads here, we basically reaffirmed the speed limit on these six roadways here. Speed limits were, stayed the same. This slide shows three roadways with, and seven segments where the speed limit will be adjusted down by five miles per hour, proposed to be adjusted down to five miles an hour. One corridor I wanted to mention is the Deportola Road from Jedediah Smith to Margarita Road, and Inez Road from Santiago to Jedediah Smith Road. This corridor, we were able to reduce the speed limit on this one based on the new AB 43 law. 85th percentiles on this road are coming in at 48 and 49 miles per hour. Typically, we would be allowed to round that up to 50, and then round it down to 45 miles per hour, which is what we've been doing for the other speed surveys. But now, with this new AB 43 law, we're actually able to take it an additionally five miles an hour below that speed limit. And the way we're able to justify that is, we considered this corridor, it has bike lanes, so we considered a biking corridor, and also, you know, residents do walk on this corridor, and there are no sidewalks. They are walking in the bike lane, so we considered it a, kind of a safety factor on why we felt like it was okay to reduce that speed limit. And with that, staff recommends that the City Council introduce an ordinance amending Section 10.28.10D of the Temecula Municipal Code Regarding Primaphysis Speed Limits on Certain Streets. And with that, I can add up to any questions?
Any questions? No? All right, thank you. So, I guess I'm looking for a-
We have several speakers.
Oh, this is a public hearing?
Yes. This is not a public hearing.
No, it's not.
It is a business item, but I do have three speakers on this particular item. It is a business item, so you do have up to five minutes each. The first speaker is Louis Todd, to be followed by Lee Russo.
Mayor, council members, staff, Aaron, staff members, Ron Moreno and, and Nick. My name's Louis Todd. I live at 30110 D Portola Road. I've spoken to you guys before in the past, and first and foremost, I want to thank the City Council and Aaron Adams for listening to our concerns about living on D Portola Road and the speed limits that are there. We didn't complain about people speeding, even though they do. We complained about the speed limit in front of our house. And for some reason, the, the state has discriminated against the homeowners that live there because our driveways are too far apart to classify as a residential neighborhood, even though we are a residential neighborhood. And I'm, I'm pleased that with, with Ron and with the direction of Pat Thomas and Nick, doing everything they could within the guardrails that the state allows you guys to, to work within, to get a reduction in the speed limit. We had hoped that this Assembly Bill 43 would give you, the City Council members, an additional opportunity to reduce the speed limit, you know, a further five miles an hour. I understand that's not going to happen. And so, I put this slide up here because I want you guys to really understand what we have to deal with. Impact speed at a pedestrian's risk of death, right, is, at 42 miles an hour, is 50%, right? Every time I take my trash cans down to the end of my property, I risk my life at a 50% potential that I'm going to be impacted by a car driving in front of my residential property. I would hope that this first step of a five mile an hour reduction is not the end. I'm hoping it's just the beginning. I also hope that we don't have to wait seven years or 14 years to see another reduction. There's a proposed roundabout one house away from where I live. We're not against roundabouts in our neighborhood, but we've experienced a tremendous amount of accidents. We just had one yesterday at, at the La Paz Roundabout. We have accidents at our four-way stop at, at Jedediah Smith and D Portola and Inez on a regular basis, and it is because the speed limit is set simply too high. You have elevation changes, you have curvature of roads, and people are using it as a cut-through. There's 70-some driveways on that section of road. If you said the average person went in and out of their driveway three times a day, it wouldn't equate to 1,000 cars driving by, but yet the survey, the traffic survey that just was done, there's over 20,000 cars drive by my house every day. Now, we were a community before the city incorporated, right? We're one of the oldest residential neighborhoods in the city. That's part of your old traditions, I'm hoping, anyway. We would like you, the City Council, to do something to help us out. We've asked Jessica with staff to take a look at some additional signage. We get passing, we get passed in our neighborhood all the time. Where in a residential neighborhood do you see cars passing one another? I shared with Jessica two, three weeks ago, I was going eastbound on D Portola, and I saw six headlights coming towards me. So, there was a car in the normal lane, there was a car in the middle lane, and there was a car passing them. Today, on my way home, going eastbound, I had another car pass, just past Jedediah Smith, and I had to veer as far to the right of the road to not get hit. I would ask that you guys implement some signs that say no passing, implement some signs that, that educate the people that are driving through our neighborhoods, that this is a neighborhood. None of these traffic studies ever taken into consideration that we have horses, that we have people walking on the streets, and I would just encourage that you guys to step up a level above and take into consideration the residents that live along that street. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
The next speaker is Lee Russo, to be followed by the last speaker, Mark Laterno.
Good evening. Thank you for taking the time. I mean, allow me to speak tonight. I wanted to, to thank city staff and council members for helping us keep our roads safer. I live in Los Ranchitos on the section of Deportola between Jedediah and Margarita, and lowering even five miles per hour, it's a great step towards increasing the, the safety in our neighborhood. I'm sure that majority, if not all of our neighbors, will feel the same way, you know, being grateful for the effort being put in and for working with us to, to make it more, to make it a safer neighborhood. At the same time, I, I'm sure all of them will agree that we, we should be doing more, and we, maybe signs like my, my, like Louis mentioned, additional signs, maybe looking at trucks, sometimes a semi. When a semi gets into a four-way intersection like a Jedediah Smith, everybody needs to move away to make room. And the most important one will be preventing that widening. Having a four-lane stair is going to be like a mini freeway, and is certainly not going to make things safer. So, that's, that's kind of the big objective long-term, to look at the general plan as being updated and try to make that, prevent that from happening. Thank you very much again.
Thank you.
Thank you. And the last speaker is Mark Laterno.
Good evening, Mayor, City Council members, and city staff. Thank you for the opportunity to share our safety concerns. My name is Mark Laterno. My family moved to Temecula in 2000, and we purchased our new home in Paseo del Sol, so I'm very familiar with Butterfield Stage Road, as well as D Portola and Inez. When we moved here, the city population was half what it is today, and the posted speed limits at the time were probably appropriate based on the amount of traffic and, and the movement of that traffic. But in the past decade, the sheer population, or the sheer amount of traffic and the speeds have led to too many speed-related traffic accidents on these streets. We're grateful to the city staff for listening to our concerns, and we're grateful to the City Council for hearing our concerns and helping save lives in the community by reducing those posted speed limits on Butterfield Stage Road and on D Portola and Inez Road. Thank you, council members and city staff for reducing those posted speed limits, for opposing any plans to widen Inez and D Portola, for protecting our quality of life, and for your focus on safety. Thank you.
Thank you.
That concludes public comments.
All right. So, council comments.
Wonderful. Well, I just want to say thank you to Los Ranchitos residents and HOA members as well for being here, and it was a pleasure speaking with you. And I was just looking over all your paperwork this morning, and actually, at 12:50, I sent out an email to my staff wanting to get an update about the signage and stuff. So, it has not been forgotten about the meeting. We will continue to dig in, and then we'll see from there realistically what we can do by the, you know, via the laws, to what we can do if we can lower that speed limit later on in the future. And I hope it's not seven years. That, I, I agree. When I was listening to him, and he was saying seven years, I'm like, I hope it doesn't take that long. But we'll see definitely what we can do. We will continue to make sure that your road and the residents stay safe, because that is definitely my first responsibility. So, I appreciate you guys for coming up, and please be in touch with me anytime. You all have my information. So, thank you, everybody.
Anybody else?
Yeah, no, I, I'm sorry. I thought we were talking about something. So, thanks to you, Nick, for the presentation. And, you know, we kind of go through this, you know, and we look at these streets, and I, I think back to years ago, when, when we first started doing this, the reaction wasn't this. The reaction was, what are you doing? Why are you lowering speed limits? And so, thinking back to those first days in Temecula where we're like, hey, it's probably a good idea that we protect pedestrians. We protect bicyclists. We protect people on their horses. Like, those are the things that we should prioritize. But, you know, California and development and the way things were, we didn't have a lot of control. I've been advocating for years for getting local control back and taking away that 85th percentile, because it's just absurd to let someone that speeds set the speed limit for everyone else. It doesn't make a ton of sense. So, you know, it, it's one of those things that I, I think back on and go, gosh, we've come a long way. And, and that's due to our, our Public Works team, and our Public Safety Commission, our Traffic Safety Commission does a great job on this, and, and really adding different perspectives about what the function of a street should be. Should it just be to move people through to Home Depot, or should, should it function in a different way? And so, I'm glad to see that these speed limits are coming down. It makes me feel safer when I ride my bike. It makes my kids feel safer when they ride theirs, and I know the community values that. But it always wasn't like that. So, it's, it's a little heartwarming to, to feel like we're going in the right direction. I, I don't live too far from where you all live, and I, and I'll drive through there on, on my commute to the store or whatever. And, and I always appreciate just like that two-lane kind of feel of it. I think like that character of that community adds value to the entire community, and, and I liken it to some other cities, larger cities, when you, you enter a smaller rural, more rural part of the town, and it's, it's just pleasant. So, I think, you know, with respect to your street, it, it's the first step. There's so much more with, when we talk about a dedicated Class 1 trail along there, and doing things that physically reduce the width. I think signs are great. They can be okay, but you actually have to physically reduce the width. You have to provide some, some physical friction to get people to slow down. And then, you know, if you just look out on Temecula Parkway, I don't know how many lanes are on Temecula Parkway anymore, but there's a lot. We want folks, if they're going to cut through to the city limit, that's where they need to go, and, and try to make it, make that section of our town function for everyone that lives in and around that area. So, again, this is really just the first step, but I do see a, a broader vision of, you know, kind of what we've done in other areas, where we've added buffered bike lanes, or we've added a trail that really just enhances the experience for everyone, and that's what we should be doing. We shouldn't be prioritizing speeds so you can get to Home Depot 30 seconds quicker or whatever it is, right? We want to make sure that those communities that have these cut-throughs, for the lack of a better word, are representative of, of the area, and we keep them safe. So, very happy to see this. It wasn't always this way, so it's good.
All right. Mr. Calviss?
Well said, Councilmember Swink. I agree with what you and Councilman Alexander said. And I think this is one of my favorite parts of this job as a council member, is being able to listen-
this is one of my favorite parts of this job as a council member, is being able to listen to the community, listen to the feedback you provide us, and then make decisions and policy on what's best for the people living in Temecula and experiencing these roads and the speed limits. And I think it's much different than my day job as a firefighter. We're with someone briefly, we don't see the outcome, we never know positive or negative the changes and the effect that we have on people, but this job is so unique where we are able to see the changes and the decisions and what we do up here affect the people out there. Like, in a few weeks here, we'll see a forty-five miles per hour speed limit on your road go to a forty miles per hour speed limit, which is pretty unique, and I think probably my favorite thing about this position that we're in. And I also want to say that I know that the four-lane street on Inez is in the CIP, and I think it's important for us up here in the future to look at that general plan, and if we're all on the same page, take that out of the future CIP, so you don't have to keep coming back here, month after month, year after year, worrying about when is this going to change into a four-lane highway, if you will. So I agree, and I would hope the majority of the council agrees, that we should take that out of a future CIP. That way, that is off the plan and our general plan. So we see you, we hear you, and I think the changes that you wish to see are being heard and the changes being affected out on our streets today. So thank you.
All right. Well, everybody's pretty much said everything, so are we accepting a motion at this moment?
Second.
All right, it's been motion and seconded, please vote. And that passes four zero. All right, so item number... So nineteen twenty, items for future agendas. Do we have anything? Not hearing any. Do we have a city manager report?
Nothing at night, Mr. Mayor.
City attorney?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. We had a closed session tonight on the Garcia case, and in the closed session, the council gave the city attorney direction regarding a potential settlement, and I will announce that if there is approval of a final settlement, that agreement will be brought back to the council for approval in open session.
All right. With that being said, we're adjourned.